Pakatake te hau kiti uru. Pakatake te hau kiti tohna. Kia ma kina kina ki uta. Kia ma tarataru ki tai. Ehi aki ana, te atakura. He tiyo, he huka, he hohu. Tiki hei mauroura.
Tenakaata katoa, no mai kiti hui o Puro Rangaranga, the Social Cultural and Economic Committee, tenira. So, welcome everyone to the committee meeting today. As usual, please let myself or Elise know if you are leaving the meeting. And we have two public participants and we will have morning tea. Hopefully we can get one of the papers done before 10:30. We do have some apologies today. We're obviously hitting the winter season and we've got a few people not well and various other things happening. So at the moment I have apologies from Liz Kelly, councillor Wolf and councillor Conde, and deputy mayor Free for early departure. Are there any other apologies? No, so I move the motion that we... Oh, councillor Phone.
I may need to be in early departure for family emergency reasons.
Cool. We have to make sure the meeting is quite efficient then because we're going to get to quorum issues if we go any lower. Okay, so I move the motion that we accept those apologies. Ma wai a totoko. Do I have a second there? Thank you councillor Phone. And we now put the motion which has been moved and seconded. Please vote. Kua mana, that is carried. Now I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to any items on the agenda. Does it look like there are? Okay, and now I'm going to confirm the minutes from the last meeting. So I can move the motion that the Puro Rangaranga Committee approved the minutes of the committee meeting held on the 5th of May 2022. Having been circulated, they'd be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Ma wai a totoko. Thank you councillor Penet. So please vote. Kua mana, that's also carried. There are no items not on the agenda and now we're going to move into public participation. So I'd like to welcome Judy Hat, who's representing the residents of Rolliston Street and the Waiata Mount Cook community, and is coming to speak to us about the demolition of a structure and creation of car parks at the top of Rolliston Street. So kia ora Judy, you've got 10 minutes and there may be some questions if there's some time in that 10 minutes. So over to you.
Kia ora katoa, kia ora katoa. To start with, I'll just give you a little bit of a background idea of what this is all about and where we live. We live in the closest house to the biggest construction project ever to happen in Wellington City. We're about 20 metres away from the noisiest part of the Oma Rua reservoir site. And everything's been a lot worse than we ever imagined it would be. The dust and the noise is terrible. It's had a really big effect on our physical and mental health. I'm working from home quite a bit these days and sometimes it's impossible to work because of the noise. But we knew that Wellington needs a secure water supply, so we felt that we could put up with three years of construction for such an essential project. From the very first consultation meeting we attended in 2017 with representatives from Wellington Water and the council, our only request was that the garage could remain because we'd made it a community hub over the 14 years that we've had the encroachment licence. Throughout the entire consultation process, we were assured many times that the garage would be safe, both during and after the reservoir construction. These assurances were made, made the constant debilitating noise and dust seem a bit more bearable. It seemed that was going to be light at the end of the tunnel. And now we feel as though we've been betrayed and everything that we've tried to do to help make our community a better place isn't valued. The Little Green Garage is a lot more than just a garage. We've lived in Mount Cook for a long time. We've always been concerned that our suburbs lacking in community facilities and a sense of neighbourliness. Mount Cook's made up of many diverse nationalities and age groups. A lot of our neighbours are students. A lot of them are on low incomes. Some of them have English as a second language. Some feel isolated from their neighbours through an inability to communicate easily and know where's safe to meet. A community hub's crucial to people's mental and emotional wellbeing, particularly in times of COVID. The garage is a sheer waste hub with 89 members. People who live in apartments with no gardens. They've created their own community garden beside the garage from their composted kitchen scraps. The garage drop-off point is easily accessible for people of all abilities. Most people walk or bike up the hill with their scraps. There's one woman who can't walk. She can drive right up to a bucket I have ready for her, lean out of her car and deposit her scraps. I can store some of the buckets inside the garage. If I leave them outside the garage, they tend to get nicked. It's a mini civil defence hub recognised by WREMO as an excellent example of a community initiative. There's food and water supplies inside the garage. There's a freezer full of food, the storage for the two-bucket toilet system. We have a $6,500 emergency kit with 67 food packages, a first aid kit, axes, battery, radios, hacksaws, everything you could possibly need in an emergency. We pay $350 every two years to have it updated. The garage hub provides peace of mind for neighbours who aren't able to accumulate the necessary emergency equipment themselves. We've created a tool library. Many people can't afford their own tools. So over 14 years we've spent thousands of dollars accumulating tools, stuff like a ladder, bench saw, drills, screwdrivers, nuts, bolts, nails, gardening equipment for our neighbours to borrow. Rat traps are available for neighbours to borrow. There's storage space. Some neighbours have no room in their homes to store things like a baby's cot and a pram. There's a young mum who lives down the road, she can't get a pram up the steep steps to her house, so she stores it in the garage and she's got her cot in there for when a baby gets a bit older. There's... It's a workshop for local artists and a woodworker. There's storage for emergency pumps and pipes for the bait house and a place for them to be worked on because there's just no room at the bait house to do that. Before the reservoir construction, we used to take groups of students to study the ecology of Papawai and Waitangi streams. The garage was their classroom and storage space for scientific glassware, nets and other things needed for their studies. There's a desk and they can charge their phones or their laptops here. A neighbour sometimes charges his electric car there, otherwise he'd have to string a power cord over two-foot paths in a road. We hope to buy an electric car ourselves to replace our petrol one and charge it in the garage. It's a gathering place for our closest neighbours. There's a barbecue, jug, coffee cups, fridge, table. The demographics of Mount Cook have changed since the new parking plan was introduced. More people are living in apartments. There'll be a lot more people living in apartments in future. They'll be walking or biking to work and not owning cars. So we find it difficult to understand why a valued community asset needs to be destroyed to replace it with three car parks. This plan was attached to all of the consultation material that we saw for years from 2016 to 2020. And this one as well. It's still the same, showing the garage remaining. And that's what we thought was going to happen. We're just devastated that it seems like the garage is in danger of being knocked down to provide for three car parking spaces. Then there's the history of the garage, both Maori and European. The garage is 97 years old, seen a lot of things over the years. And this is what we found secreted in the walls of the garage. And one of the walls between a sheet of plywood and the corrugated iron, sarongai. And we always felt that the sarongai we found hidden in the wall of the garage years ago was protecting it. And now we're not so sure. And we're also worried about, there's a little group of geckos living right beside the garage and they have for years. And we're just really concerned if the garage is knocked down, they'll lose their habitat. And, you know, unless we find them and relocate them, they'll just get wiped out. So what we are here today is to ask, we'd appreciate it very much if you could give consideration to returning to the original parking plan and honouring the assurances we were given during the consultation process. And that's all I have to say. If you've got any questions.
Are there any questions from the committee? So we've got councillor Penet.
Thank you Judy and for everything you've done for the city over many years. I'm just wondering if you could talk about whether you think that there are any alternatives or really this is the only option to sort of meet the needs of the community in that part of the city?
I'm sure there are alternatives, but I really can't see how they could be set up and administered within our neighbourhood because what we have is in the perfect place. It's a really sturdy building and it's absolutely fit for purpose. And it's right where the people who use it live. So if perhaps another community hub was set up somewhere, it would be for other people in the community, I guess, but not for the people who really need it in our area. And the tool library, I mean, we can look after it and monitor it from the house. The house is just overlooking the garage. It'd be really hard to do that anywhere else. And the sheer waste, I just, I would have to give up. I couldn't do it from the house. And unless someone else wants to set it up somewhere else in Mount Cook, there's 89 people who just have nowhere to take their compost to.
Kia ora, thank you very much Judy. That seems like it's all the questions that we have for you. So thank you for coming in to share with us. And do you have... Here we go. Councillor Phone has a question.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Councillor Phone has a question.
Thanks Judy. Can I just ask what communication you've had from offices? And have you had meetings with officers about the situation? And if yes, what have they said to you?
We were presented with a fait accompli originally. When we were presented with the new parking plan, the one that we weren't consulted on, the council officer then said that she'd made up her mind. And when we asked if we could, our neighbours wanted to get a petition together and we asked her if we could do that and we said who's the petition to go to, and she said to me. And we thought, well, that's not reasonable because you're the one that has said that you've made up your mind. And if we present the petition to you, then it's pretty pointless. So then she said, well, go through the community reference group. That's what it's for. So we did and we have had overwhelming support, Leave the Garage Alone, through the community reference group feedback. But that was all discounted by saying that the new parking plan was the best layout for the top of the street and that was it. And then we met with Paul Andrews and he said that he would maintain that the process had been undergone correctly. And we had to still demolish the garage. And then we met with Kim, Kim Phil, and he maintained the same. But we're saying that the process wasn't undergone correctly. It was flawed. And it's just simply unfair to overrule everything that the community has provided feedback on to insist on a plan that was introduced very late in the proceedings. Thanks Laurie.
Kia ora, thank you Judy for coming to speak to us today. We can't make any decisions today because that's in our standing orders, but we do appreciate you coming to talk to us. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Day. Thank you everyone.
Right now I'd like to welcome Nick Ruane on behalf of the Wellington City Council Accessibility Advisory Group to speak to us on the economic wellbeing strategy. No mai, haire mai ano. It's good to see you here Nick. And so you know how this works, we've got 10 minutes. Might be some questions, kia ora.
Kia ora councillors, no mai, haire mai. It's very nice to be back in front of a face-to-face meeting. I just wanted to come today to speak in support of the strategy, but also to offer some thoughts and recommendations about how the employment for disabled people could be strengthened within the strategy. Employment for disabled people is a really significant issue and challenge that we face as a country, but also a challenge that we face particularly in the city, but also more widely within the country. I just wanted to offer some, my support for the strategy as a whole, but obviously as I've said, some encouragement and support and suggestions that councillors, council officers could take on board. Firstly, congratulations for including the employment for disabled people within the strategy. I think it's very significant and something that can be built upon. One thing I'd like to strongly encourage councillors and officers to think about is to sign the accessibility charter. That's something that's sitting with councillors at the moment and officers. And it's a strategic framework that all accessibility can sit under and within. And certainly the employment for disabled people is a key component of the accessibility charter. So I'd strongly encourage you to shift that forward as a matter of priority. The, that provides a framework for council to work within and certainly internships sit within the accessibility charter as a key deliverable that you can then ask questions about how employment is being actioned within council here. One of the other things that has become increasingly important is partnerships and partnering with organisations that can actually deliver upon employment for disabled people. There are some very good words within the strategy, but it comes down to the deliverables and how you deliver on those words and actions. So just yesterday, the Wellington Regional Skills Leadership Group has delivered their draft plan for, what did they call it? I think they called it their, their draft regional workforce plan. And they've made some quite significant statements about the importance of disabled people as a key workforce. And I think there's some important things in there that council could look at. Some key partnerships that council could look at with the organisations that actually do the hard work and have some key partnerships, particularly in the area of industry partnerships. There's been some key partnerships in the areas of rural IT, but they can apply right across the board, particularly here in Wellington where information technology, service industry are some quite key partnerships that could be explored by council and also supported by council. Council has the right levers to be able to do the supportive work. Maybe not the hiring so much, but certainly the supportive work. Another key aspect that council has the opportunity to do some more work in is around what we talk about as becoming a disability confident organisation. And that's something that is becoming more and more focused on. You're seeing that right across the vocational space. It's becoming a word that everyone's starting to look at. How are we becoming more disability confident as an organisation? It's something that you probably won't see in the accessibility charter, but it's something that everyone's starting to focus on. So I'd encourage council to think about how council is becoming more disability confident because you can place people into organisations, that's not difficult. But what happens when they get there? That's the difficult part. So as council, I'd encourage you to think about how are you becoming disability confident as an organisation? And that is actually quite difficult work. And it requires professionals to work with you as an organisation, to walk alongside you every day. So I'd encourage you to think about that and to partner with professional organisations that do that work. Those are the questions that I would encourage you to think about. That's not easy. I'll put it down in five minutes, but that's probably a two or three-year work plan that we're just talking about there. I'm happy to answer any questions our councillors have, or if you don't have questions, that's fine, but...
I think we do. Yeah, we do. So we've got our first partai from councillor Young.
Nick, hi, thank you. Tell me, in the UK, by statute, companies and organisations over a certain size have to employ a percentage of people with disabilities. Has there been any move for that in New Zealand?
No, short answer. New Zealand has a preferred approach, which we describe as light touch in terms of legislation and regulation. To our detriment, we're about to pass, well, to put legislation into the parliament, which will move us more towards a legislative approach. But historically, we have been very, very reluctant to legislate in this space. So yeah, I would answer no to that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Matthews.
Kia ora Nick. We don't even seem to be in the same room, so sorry that I'm not there today. I wanted to ask you about the accessibility charter and follow up on your comments. My understanding is that that is a document that council is going to sign up to through officers. And actually, that won't be a decision that's coming to councillors. And I just wanted to check in with you about that because I will also ask some questions when we come to the paper and debate of officers about this.
Yes, I think you may be correct, but I think it's always useful to have things being, our officers being reminded about the importance and necessity for this to be signed off. Yeah. And I think the accessibility charter sets the strategic environment and the framework for all of these conversations to happen. So I think if officers are reminded of the importance of this document and then by councillors, then I think that that will ultimately enable us to move forward on all of these conversations. Because the accessibility charter has, I think, 11 areas of work, if you like, that they focus on. And employment is just one of them. So it's a really comprehensive document in terms of accessibility, but employment is just one of them.
Thank you.
Kia ora, thank you Nick for coming in to share with us. It's really interesting. It's really good for us to understand that and hear it from you. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I hope you have a good rest of the day.
You're welcome. Thank you very much and I appreciate the time today.
Kia ora.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very interesting. Right, we're going to move into our general business now and we're going to start with item 2.1, which is our submission on Ministry for Environment, Draft National Adaptation Plan and Managed Retreat. So no mai, Alison Howard, kiti hura i te korero. So come forward Alison. And I'll get you to, I guess, introduce the report. And then I'm aware that we've got some amendments from councillor Penet and we might adjourn for a minute so that we can have a conversation about how we want to manage that, kia ora, thank you. If that works for you, I think probably is the best way, quickest way to manage that because there's quite a bit in there. But if we get you to introduce everything now and then we'll go from there, kia ora.
Hi, thank you. Kia ora. You have all read the paper, so I won't go through our submission in detail. It is very long. Plus, we had the workshop a couple of weeks ago on the topic. We are one of the few councils that is answering all 72 questions, so I'm quite proud of us for that. Like, you know, that's what you get when you're a bigger council and you've got a principal advisor for adaptation. You do get to actually answer all 72 questions and provide that feedback. So I think that's really awesome. Our key points echo what local government New Zealand has also written, which is that the National Adaptation Plan is a good summary of all of the government's current work, but that we're still waiting for central government to give us clarity, information, regulatory instruments, funding and financing mechanisms, clarity on the role of local government. So there's still a whole lot of outstanding pieces that we're waiting for. So our submission basically is a, if you could give us the things that you've been promising for a while, that would be really handy. Plus some specific feedback on the work they have underway. So that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. So what we might do now, just for people online as well, is adjourn maybe for about... Oh, are there any questions before they actually, sorry, yes. Do you have any question councillor Fitzsimons?
I've also got Jamuna online because I don't know the detail of the 72.
I've also got Jamuna online because I don't know the detail of the 72 questions.
Oh, good, this is around question four and it talks about asking government for clear regulatory powers and one of the ones that the council is asking for is around private owners being able to decide if they want to maintain their properties off the grid while allowing councils to make rational decisions about infrastructure delivery. And I just kind of wonder where that came from and if we've thought through the public policy implications of that because there's a whole range of issues around setting up people off the grid that I think are quite problematic and it's, yeah, I can see it's, that could have really damaging impacts on communities.
So in our answer to that question, it's using that as an example of something that some communities have wanted but not been able to achieve under current regulatory mechanisms, so it's asking the government to just think through if that's something communities want, how would that actually play out in a regulatory environment? So I can tweak that wording if you like.
Yeah, I just wondered about it because, yeah.
A thought experiment as opposed to a specific thing that we desire and it came from that example of managed retreat where a council up north, and I can't remember exactly where, but they extinguished property rights for a handful of houses and some of those people just wanted to stay and run their house as a badge and that wasn't kind of legally allowable in that circumstance but really upset that local community.
Yeah, I guess my question really is, communities might want it but this is the position of the council and, you know, do we really want to be proposing that sort of thing in it?
We want to be proposing more flexibility, we don't want to be going from your house is worth a lot of money under this district plan with the right to be there and, oh, this next district plan, your house is worth nothing because we've removed its residential housing zone.
Yes, I guess my question is, what risks do you think there would be if we suggested that people can live off the grid and completely opt out of being part of public infrastructure?
There's risk up the wazoo, so I will happily tweak the wording of that to be a thought experiment as opposed to a recommendation.
My other question just is going back to Marketer Beach following on from the questions I think I asked in the workshop and I guess I'm really interested in how we make sure because I think it's great to see the honest assessment of Marketer Beach and, you know, I really do want to see that and it talks about the work being done and that targeted rates were determined as the only appropriate funding mechanism and obviously this is about getting other ones, but what can we do with coastal communities, for example on the South Coast who are currently organising, within the current framework? Obviously there's stuff coming and it's underway but I'm really worried that we don't enter into the same sort of process with Marketer Beach without actually being able to do. So what's available, how can we not have this as a Marketer Beach situation where we do all this work, people are really engaged in it, a plan is developed and then nothing happens because it's too hard?
I think we sort of covered this in the workshop the other week, is that it is quite challenging and I think I'd like a follow up workshop with councillors to help chart that way forward for how we deal with communities because we do currently lack a lot of the support from central government that we would need to make that conversation a meaningful conversation and I don't like that. So, yeah, I would really like a follow up workshop with councillors to plot out that course.
You know, that's really helpful and in some ways it's also just being honest about what you've just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Thank you, we've got some partai from councillor Phone.
Kia ora and thank you for the very thorough submission, very detailed. I guess my question, and I've got to be honest, just the time to really go back and recheck but I just want to check that while we've got the sea level rise sounds like our main threat for Wellington but I'm just concerned about, you know, flooding and stream erosion as well and do you think the submission gives a balanced or a fair approach on that for being another risk for Wellington with our landslides and hills and?
I can go back and look at that. I mean, our key risks are from sea level rise in that that impacts flooding, so inland flooding where water can't get out because the sea level rise is higher than the stormwater system is capable of exiting the water. But yes, I also take your point on landslide, so is there a specific question where you think it, or is it just a general feeling?
It's a general, like, I couldn't go back, that's what I mean, I couldn't go back over it to go, right, where is that?
Okay, I'll have a look with that in mind, thank you.
And one more partai on, the other one was around what other risks do we have, for example, around the water table for the city, so for example lower huts risk, how does that impact Wellington city's risk? And that's something I'm not fully understanding but just, yeah, what risks do we have to, you know, our supply of water as a region?
I'm expecting that kind of analysis to come from the regional impact assessment where we are combining our understanding of the hazards but also what I call the so what, so yes, there's that map of a hazard or there's that issue but what does that mean for the social, political, cultural, economic impacts of what happens next?
Yeah, would it be right to note that in our submission because I think that if there was flooding or sea level rise that impacted the water table, that would be quite a big impact for Wellington as a city?
Yeah, if I can find somewhere that it fits in nicely. I mean, the submission is quite rightly meant to be focusing on what has the government written in the nap?
Okay.
You know, what have they said? There would be plenty of opportunities for us to dig into what our specific risks are.
Yeah, okay.
This is more about our comments on what the processes are for how we would deal with things once we've identified them and how we cope with the interdependencies, how, you know, what do we do next after we've figured out what those hazards and impacts are?
Okay, and so one more question would be on the, and I note that you were quite specific with your timeframe, that government maybe did need to speed things up so we can get clarity on how to move forward and I guess, do you feel that was spread through the submission, that point, I felt like could have been raised more often?
Okay.
With some feedback, thank you.
Kia ora. Kia ora, I also do have a question and it follows on from councillor Phone's one about streams and rivers because we're having, obviously in the northern ward we've got the Porirua Stream which is causing some quite big challenges and, you know, climate change will be having an impact on that, but we do actually have some properties where, you know, they are losing quite a lot of their land but also some of the flooding inundation, you know, future wise looks like it could be more significant and whether there's any opportunity to speak to that with regards to managed retreat because it's not something that we've really had in our plans. I know that the regional council has done some work on the Hut River with regards to that but it is also very much connected in with our district plan and the fact that through Lake Tawa our train line pretty much follows our stream and of course that's why we get the uplift that we're going to get which is fantastic, but how do we work that in with the stream when properties could get quite close because some of our permissive distances are quite close to the stream? So I just wonder if it is, I couldn't really find where it would fit in the submission but I did feel like streams and rivers maybe do need to be in there because, you know, when we've got cities built up around them, we do have sort of similar impacts as people have living on the coast, so I do think it would be worth having some mention of that in there. Any more questions? Otherwise, we're just going to adjourn for only five minutes just to sort out these amendments so councillor Penney can have a chat with you, we will have morning tea still at half past but I think we'll just do this quickly now and then keep moving. So we'll come back at 10 past, kia ora.
So that's all sorted. The officers are fine with councillor Pannett's amendments being part of this substantive. So we're going to get councillor Pannett to move the paper now. So thank you to the officers. Over to you.
Kia ora, chair. Well, look, this is a rather grim topic, obviously, but I actually feel very optimistic today that we have the government taking a really proactive approach to this very serious matter. And that we can actually have a government department talking about reforming institutions is deeply significant. So we are the star player here, obviously. They're going to look at our submission. The officers have done an amazing job, very detailed and comprehensive feedback and really intelligent. The process has been good. We've been able to give some input, so I'm very grateful for that. Yeah, look, I mean, really, I think the ministry and staff have done a good job looking at all of the issues and appreciate the input around respecting te tariri and tangata finoa, obviously, critical if we are to be successful in meeting this challenge. So, look, I'm not going to go over what the paper says because you have read it. So I just want to briefly mention why I've made these amendments, and they're not major, but I just, I think hopefully they just highlight a few important points. Certainly, there's a lot in the paper around local communities and decision making, but I did just want to make that point quite strongly about if we are to meet the challenge, we are going to need community participation and leadership. It's not going to be just a top-down process. We all need to get on board. So just if that can just be added on, that I think will be helpful. And I think when we're scared too, because it is a slightly frightening topic, it's good to empower people. For me, question three was the really critical one. I think we just needed to add some material in there because the transition is going to be painful for many people. So I've just come up with a few examples. It's not comprehensive, but just really trying to say, in partnership with marginalised communities, hopefully going to increasingly become less marginalised, looking at appropriate solutions to meet those specific needs. Insurance is raised and really helpfully just pointing out that Māori have much lower rates of insurance. And of course, you know, for people on low incomes, that's going to be difficult and it's going to get even more difficult as the prices go up. Just looking at mechanisms to support people to meet the transition, you know, like whether it is, dare I say, assistance with housing to make it more resilient, lifting houses up or whatever, there could be a whole lot of things. But it's just really about investigation. I'm not making any point around that. And looking at different languages where English is not the first language. I take the officer's point that the economic opportunities in climate change are not huge, but I wanted to be positive and hopefully that we can look at new business opportunities, stronger communities, more flexible to find those new economic opportunities, because we have to, we all have to have economic opportunities to support ourselves. The Building Act, I take the officer's point, this will happen once the CAA goes through, but I think it's just really critical that when we're talking about making institutional reform and our communities stronger, that we do need to look at how the Building Act is responding. Something in there just about green infrastructure. Councillor Fitzsimons, when you were asking your question, and I was just like, oh, we tried to do a green solution in Island Bay. It just got, it was too risky, too expensive. We had a short-term solution, which was okay, but look, that's going to, we're going to have to do more of that, and it's going to be really, really challenging. And just putting something in there about insurance. Insurance is hard, apart from the fact that the insurers can rightly say that we should have known about climate change because they've been talking about it for decades. You know, we've got a global industry where the reinsurers have enormous power, and that is going to be very difficult, even at a government level, to deal with. But nevertheless, if it can just be strengthened up. And there may, of course, need to be alternatives to insuring with insurance companies, self-insurance community schemes, which take the power away from some extremely powerful players. But look, these are just recently minor. I'm really proud of the fact that Wellington City Council can put in the submission because it is a high-calibre one, and I think will really move the debate forward as we navigate some very, very complex issues around the transition and around who's going to pay, which is going to be really, really hard. But, you know, my view is that everyone needs to. We're just going to have to figure out how that's distributed. Thank you.
Kia ora, and councillor Paul, so I'm a seconder. Over to you, Kia ora.
Yeah, Kia ora. I just wanted to start by thanking Alison and Jamuna and the team, and Kayden and all the team for putting together this submission. It's just the submission, and, you know, hopefully the government and the minister listen to what we have to say. I just wanted to reflect briefly on, I think it was on the first year of council when there was the big storm surge out at the south coast. And I remember I said in the media before having even talked to those communities that, you know, oh, we need to talk about managed retreat now. And I remember councillor Fitzsimons calling me up, and she's like, um, you can't be going out there saying those things before you talk to the community. So that was a really good lesson, and that's actually how I met Eugene as well. So I just wanted to shout out to Eugene for all of the work that he's done in organising coastal communities, and just wanted to plug his event on the 29th of June with the minister, Minister Shaw, in coastal communities, talking about managed retreat, ah, not managed retreat, sorry, adaptation, adaptation. Yeah, I think the community's been waiting a long time for this conversation to happen. It does feel like we do get told that this conversation is coming, and it never quite comes. I remember in the first year on council, I was saying, you know, we really need to be talking about adaptation out in communities, and was kind of told, oh, we've got the Marketer project, and once we hire our climate change response manager, then you'll get an adaptation plan. And then we got Alison, which has been awesome. But then we had to wait until Alison was able to hire an adaptation manager. And so it feels like we've, you know, we're three years down the road. We still don't quite clearly know what our plan is for Wellington, and we're still kind of waiting on what the government framework is for that. And I think communities will begin to get impatient with that because they are feeling the effects now of climate change and sea level rise and the increase in storms. So I think we've got to front foot some of that. And I even, you know, had a conversation recently with Eugene where ideas about task forces on adaptation planning were mentioned. So I think we've got to really front foot that, or communities will start to manifest that for themselves about what they want. The last thing I wanted to say was on some of the amendments. I thought it was great to mention some of those marginalised communities and how they will be impacted by sea level rise and climate change. And the big one is going to be that they need housing. And so I really think we've got to keep that in mind. And I know that that's what they're going to say, is they want access to housing because we know the poorest communities are living in the lowest level places that are most likely to flood, and they are going to want to live in safe housing, warm housing, close to places where they work and study and live and enjoy. So yay for my housing! And shout out to councillor Matthews, we can bring housing into any court at all. So yeah, Kia ora, thanks everyone for your work.
Kia ora. Councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank officers as well for the work on this. It's a really difficult issue, and it is really emotive. We are talking about people's lives and their homes. But on, you know, coastal communities, and I particularly think of those ones on the south coast, have been sharing their beach and their community with all residents for many, many years. And I think we now need to look at solutions which are collective in nature, which aren't just about central government or local government or communities alone, but that we do it together. I'm really pleased that the submission is honest about what happened in Marketer. I really welcome that because the council did engage in a massive process in Marketer. We spent hours with those people. They went to a lot of meetings, and at the end of the day, we didn't have any tools that could deliver a meaningful outcome for them because they're such a small community and a targeted rate is so unfair and unjust. And I think, you know, just want to acknowledge councillor Pannett raising the seawall in Island Bay, and the community were up in arms at the suggestion that that seawall not be replaced. And I just think about Marketer and that seawall and the risks that happen when the council enters into, well, comes up with proposals without bringing the community with us, because what happens is that they completely lose faith in the council, and they won't be able to have the honest conversations we need to in the future. I really agree in the submission that the language of managed retreat is not helpful. It's emotive, but it's also jargon. People don't understand what managed retreat means. We do need to be talking about relocating homes to safe places. I'm pleased that officers have agreed to change the language around off-the-grid solutions because these are not the answer. It is dangerous to give communities the expectation that they can opt out of the council and opt out of the community. It's not realistic for them to live off the grid, and it's not fair on them. And we need to come up with solutions that means that everybody is well-housed and everybody is looked after. So thanks for the work on it, and very happy to support it.
I think that's all of the speakers. Oh, councillor Phone.
Yeah, just briefly, I do want to acknowledge our coastal communities and that wave surge in, what was it, 2020, April? Yeah, it was a big shock. So probably, you know, from my experience on council, being in a position of responsibility when watching that happen to a community, and until you really feel it, this isn't really important to you. And I totoku what councillor Fitzsimons says, it's not one community's problem, it's all of us need to take ownership. And actually, I move into that framing, you know, the bigger the new purpose, like we need to be moving and thinking like that as a community now. It's not just about us, or the I, or the me, but the we, and particularly in situations like this. Just a couple of points I wanted to make was I also wanted to acknowledge the point around destination land, and thank officers for the point of not developing in green fields, but being accommodated by greater density. As we know, we're trying to align with our district and spatial plan. And I also just want to celebrate the work of the digital twin, and that a tool like that has been groundbreaking globally, and it's great to see it acknowledged here, and that I look forward to something like this as open source so that any community can go forward and develop their own to help them understand the risks going forward. So yeah, thank you, officers, for a very fulsome and thorough submission. It took a while to read it, just saying.
Kia ora, over to write a reply.
Thank you, all excellent points. I just want to respond to two councillor Fitzsimons. The engagement response from the Island Bay seawall were more diverse than that. There were actually people who were happy to move the wall back. There were people with the natural solution, and I think where we, so that was a really good conversation, but then we didn't have the money to do one of the solutions. And I think that was a learning thing. But it actually was quite a constructive conversation at times, and, you know, started things off. The point about opting out of council services, and it's not realistic to live off-grid, well, it's partly philosophical, isn't it? There are people that choose to do that. Poor old Jeanette Fitzsimons, her farm was always breaking down. But there are people, there are people that do that. And I think actually, when we did start to have some discussions around water, around having composting toilets, around dealing with wastewater on-site, dealing with our green waste on-site, actually, actually, I think we will, we might not get completely there, but we will get part of the way there because it's very expensive to provide to those public services. I of course believe in community responses, councillor Fitzsimons, not, I'm certainly not just all about individual responses. So I think that's an interesting conversation, but I'm glad we've got some slightly amended wording, that will be fine. So I look forward to just signing that submission off tomorrow. Many thanks again.
Kia ora, thank you, everybody. Let's vote. Yeah, we're going to, just while we're waiting for the vote, we're going to do actions tracking in full programme. No, probably not. There's another bit that was... Yeah, there was a, I'll explain it soon, one of the recommendations wasn't in there. So kouamana, that is carried. So we will now move on to item 2.4, which is the actions tracking. So I'll hand over to Kim to introduce the report.
Kia ora, thank you, chair. So I might just take the report as read. We do have 20 items complete and 14 still in progress, but making some good progress at all. So yeah, happy to answer any questions on this.
So I've got a question from councillor Pannett.
Sorry, I did have a question. You say that it's in progress around advice around remitting rates back to city housing. Where exactly is that at?
Remitting rates?
Yeah, it was an amendment that I got through in February.
What page is it on?
Oh, it's on, is it? Oh, okay, okay, so that's good. And now also, I'm sorry, I must have obviously forgotten something. We also got an amendment through about preparing advice on how to end the ring fencing of city housing, which was a bugbear of mine. When did we get that?
I feel like we've had that advice.
I thought we would ask for more. I mean, and it says it's complete, but I just didn't think that we'd got the advice.
I'll need to come back to you on that one.
Could you do that? Yeah, that'll be fine. Okay.
Are there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm happy to move that paper. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Pannett. So if everyone would like to vote now.
Waiting on councillor Young.
Okay, you can't, you're not managing to vote. You know, muted at the moment. You could do a thumbs up, thumbs down maybe? Can you hear me? Councillor Young, can you hear me? I think she'll be in favour. She is nodding. Are you, oh, you've done it. Can we hear you? I feel like I can hear a puppy. Oh, she's gone. Okay. All right, so kouamana, that is carried. So now we'll move on to item 2.7, the forward programme. No māikum vau ki te hura i te kordaro. So over to you.
Yeah, thank you, chair. We've got a really busy August agenda, so you'll see it listed there on page 276. Yeah, very happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Are there any partai? That's going to be a big meeting. Can't see any questions online. Yeah, yeah, we're still going to be working right till the end, eh? Okay, so there's no partai, in which case I will move this paper. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Phone. So if you'd like to vote now.
And apologies, I was here, but I temporarily lost you between screens.
No.
I would have voted yes.
That's what we did for you. Kouamana, so that is carried. We can hear your puppy! Your puppy's finished its bone. So we will break from morning tea now, and I think we have 15 minutes, so I can come back at quarter to 11. See you soon. See you soon. Move on now to item 2.2, engagement summary and adoption of the economic wellbeing strategy. So no mai, Karen, Maryman, i te hura i te koriro. We've got Baz coming up as well, and Anna. So obviously we've received the fantastic paper, very thorough. And we'll get you to introduce it and then there might be a few questions from the committee. So over to you, Kilda.
Thank you. So this paper is providing you with a summary of our engagement, in particular the consultation that occurred earlier this year, and the resulting changes that we've made to the strategy as a result of that engagement. Key changes that have been made have been around strengthening the circular economy component and strengthening items around employment for disability community and other marginalised community groups. And strengthening also components around the business-friendly city and the dynamic city. So the dynamic city, which is outcome six, was the most supported outcome and clearly indicates a strong need for action. So that's been, yeah, really elaborated on and a lot more actions have been put into that space as well.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councillor Penett?
First of all, big congratulations. As I said, I don't need to move an amendment, although I've got to support councillor Foon's thing. But it's so progressive. I was just very happy when I read it. So I'm going to ask a slightly more conservative question, which is around... Slightly surprisingly. Well, it was just around diversifying our economy. Always a problem in capital cities, we've... well, not a problem, in a way, it's a good thing of course. But we've got a very strong public service. We love our public servants, but we do always, of course, if government decides to spread out, decentralise more, then have we got enough of a plan? And when I looked at it, I just was a little bit nervous.
Yeah, I think the biggest opportunity that we've identified is in the tech centre, with the tech sector, in terms of that low-carbon knowledge base that goes across numerous sectors as well, if you look at how we can support that. So there's actions relating to skills and capability to try and grow the number of jobs in that area because there are, there's potential growth, there's so much growth opportunity, but we just don't have enough talent at the moment to meet the needs of our tech companies. So that's the biggest action we're looking at, where we've been working with Wellington NZ to develop a far more comprehensive tech strategy that looks at everything from skills and capability development, to how we attract more investment, to how we scale up high-growth potential companies. And also they're looking at, kind of I guess, hanging their hat on clean tech as a big emerging opportunity that Wellington could own, if you like. So that's probably the biggest opportunity for Wellington outside of government.
And I presume too, people could of course just live here and they can work anywhere in the world.
Yes.
Now that things have changed so much, yeah. Except if you work for Tesla, did you see that extraordinary story from Elon Musk? You're leaving us hanging. People to leave unless they were prepared to come into the office and work 40 hours a week, as opposed to him who works 120 hours.
Oh, wow. Okay, are there any other questions? Councillor Matthews?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up that public submission from Nick Ruane and just, it would be good to get an update where the organisation is in terms of the adoption of the accessibility charter and if there's anything that councillors need to do to support that process. Thank you.
Thanks for the question councillor. I'm not actually aware of where that is at the moment in terms of the process, but we can come back to you via email after the meeting if you like.
I think potentially Mr. Falm might know something.
This is around the accessibility charter, where we're at, where the council's at, and if councillors can do anything to support it.
I'm working with Jenny Rains at the moment on that, so yeah, I'll be able to provide some more information back to you shortly, if that's okay councillor Matthews.
That would be wonderful, thank you. And we do, obviously, we're very keen to support that, so that would be great. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Are we? Are there any other partai? Councillor Foon?
Congratulations, great work. Are you aware of any other cities in New Zealand that have put into their economic strategy to transition to a circular economy?
Taranaki are already doing quite a lot of work in that space, so that's the key one. But MB is doing work with a lot of different cities around the country in terms of just, well, they're doing background sort of things. So it's nothing major pushing, but they are actually working with Taranaki City Council to become circular, so it's a bit like a template of what to do. But no, I don't know if any others have been as explicit as we have.
So we could champion being the first if we pass it today?
Potentially.
I like firsts.
Could be risky if we get proven wrong. Are there any other questions? No? Yeah, that's right. Cool, thank you very much the staff. We'll now move on to debating the paper. So I would now like to invite Mia Foster to move this motion.
Thank you Chair. Look, I'm delighted to move this. I'm going to start off with, somebody actually said to us yesterday, that, it was Terry, he said, you know, sometimes you end up, she brought somebody to one of our meetings and said that all you did was you spent a lot of time thanking each other. So anyway, I'm going to start off with some thank yous regardless. And I just did want to say a huge thank you to the team who've done all the work on this, to Karen, to Anna and Baz particularly. Between you, you've done a fantastic job and I really appreciate all the work that's gone in. This has been quite a long gestation to get to this point. I mean, there was a stage where we thought we might actually get it in 2020 and then Covid came and did various different things. And then 2021, it was the same. So it's been, and then we've had different people, I mean Erica did work on it as well. So different people have held the pen during this period of time. There's been a lot of work done, a lot of the ethos there was the one of co-creation. And so, in a sense, while it was disappointing not to get a huge number of submissions, we've had a huge amount of feedback from, particularly from the business community, from a whole lot of different fora and different avenues of input for a very long period of time. So, and those, I hope that business actually sees the input in the strategy and in the action plan. There are, actually I should probably say, I don't end with this. I should say that there are two things which I want to make sure I picked up there. Can you actually push the, just push it up a little bit so we've got... Right, okay, those bits there. So I'll deal with these right up front so that you can actually cogitate on them, but I don't think there's any issue there because officers are supportive of both. Councillor Foon asked that we put eight in, which is basically to say, look, we don't want a strategy that just sits on the shelf. We want one that actually, work's been done on it and then when it comes to doing funding to support things, if there's a necessity for that, it comes in at the right time before the 2024 LTP. So that makes absolute sense and I think having regular feedback on our strategies is always a good thing. And I don't think it's something which we do well enough in our quarterly reports, as we report on projects and programmes, but not so much on strategies. So I think it's a, that's a good thing to be explicit there. And the other one is just to insert in the action plan that we, in the business-friendly component, one of the things we have talked about for a long period of time is insurance. Businesses said this is a real issue. You know, Grant Robertson, when he was Minister in charge of the Earthquake Commission, said, look, the system is broken. And there have been some changes made in the residential area in terms of upping the EQC amounts, but not in the business area. And we know that businesses kept on saying to us, look, you know, it costs us, you know, $100,000 to ensure what in Auckland costs 10,000. That's an issue, that's a handbrake on the Wellington economy and it's something that needs to be addressed. So those are two changes which are included there. So I'll go back to what I was going to talk about. This is quite a different strategy from the 2011 strategy. 2011 strategy was really about saying, hey, let's pick a few big winners. I think we delivered one which then undelivered itself, which was the Biz Dojo, Biz Hub. And that concept still remains a good concept and is actually in here as well. That fell over for a number of different reasons. And then of course, we're delivering the Taquina, the new convention and exhibition centre. The others, kind of there's some livability and transport things you could argue about, but some of the others obviously haven't happened, like runway extensions and so on, and major auditoria haven't happened. But this is a very different one. This is about setting, much more about setting an environment where business can evolve, can be created, can grow, can survive and can thrive. And it's quite deliberate that in the strategy, there are things which are about, they're not directly economic things, but there are things that support the economy. And while the wellbeing strategy doesn't reinvent those things, it does recognise that things like transport, infrastructure... infrastructure, lifestyle, housing are all really, really important. If you don't get those things right, you don't have a place that people want to live, you don't have a place that people want to choose to do business. And one of the things that came through time and time again in talking to businesses and to employees as well, well, one was housing. Is, you know, if we, if our employees are struggling to find housing, that's an issue for us. And so it's important that we recognise that's an underpinning, that if the infrastructure is not working, that's an important underpinning. And also, why do people choose to live here? And what we see time and time again, you know, while some people will knock our city, time and time again, we get global recognition for, you know, our environmental leadership, for being the best place to retire, one of the best places to retire to, to live in. No, that was just, I'm just thinking some of those things. Cognizant saying we're, you know, one of the few cities of the, you know, I think it's 19 cities of the future and the only one in Australasia. I mean, you know, those are the kind of accolades that people see in Wellington and those sort of lifestyle components are really, really important to back that. We did, as we developed this, we asked businesses about whether they wanted us, you know, because obviously we were going through the whole Covid pandemic. Still haven't got out of it yet, but, you know, we're emerging from it, we're living with it now. And we said, you know, are you up for thinking about the long term? And they said, yeah, absolutely, we are. We don't want you just to be focused on the short term. We want you to be looking at the long term, the five, 10, 20, 30 years as well. So that was really, really good. Councillor Penner, I think in your questions, you're picking up one of those things which is about, there's a strong degree of values in this as well. The kind of, the kind of city that we want to be, that sort of circular economy, that inclusive economy, whether it's in the Maori economy, whether it's in the accessibility, those things are all really, really important. So the values that drive the strategy are important, which is why it's an economic wellbeing strategy, not just an economic strategy. There are six key focus areas which are in there and I've got to say, I was really delighted to see the strong positive support for the area which I actually encouraged to be included, which was the importance of the dynamic central city and the suburban, dynamic suburban communities. I think in Wellington, so many, so many cities have suburbs which actually are kind of like, you can't tell where one ends and the next one begins and there's not a lot of difference in them. Wellington is a city where, probably because of our unique geography, every one of our suburbs has something special and unique about it and that's something which I think we need to treasure and support. But it's all built around that heart of a dynamic central city. And it's good to see the support for that. In terms of the actions, I think what we do have a real, a real challenge, I mean, Covid has really challenged central cities. And that's been very, very tough for our central city. And we really do need, and I think again, I can't remember whose question it was, that thing about making sure that our central city is strong is really, really important. And we can't now rely on people, we can't rely on people being told, it's your Elon Musk thing. You can't tell people they've got to come into work because obviously the workplace has changed and we've all got used to that workplace changing. We've got councillors who are here online for various different reasons, whether it's puppies or birthdays or whatever it might be. People can do that from outside and we've got to try and make an environment where people say, I want to be here. Because if people don't want to be here, then that doesn't support the cafes and the restaurants and the bars and the retailers. So that's really so, so important. So we've got to keep on investing in amenity and making transport attractive. We've got to keep on investing in events. We've got to support and work with our hospitality sector, our retail sector. We've got to keep on investing and supporting safety and cleanliness and those sort of things are all alluded to in the action programme in here. A second area of focus is that whole area of being business-friendly, smooth consenting pathways. We've been having quite a lot of conversations about that. And I think those areas of sitting alongside customers, helping customers through the complex process that there are in council and people advocating for businesses. So we've got people inside of council who are advocating for them to get through the consenting pathway. That's really, really important. In the sustainable business and careers, Nick talked to us about the importance of inclusiveness. We've got things about internships in there. We've got to make sure we work with the education sector, which often gets so overlooked. There's bits which have been included in there about hospitality and working with the hospitality sector. And if I might just pick up on something that Sarah Meekle said at the launch of Visa Wellington, I played the other day. She said that in the last eight months, 40 or 40-plus new hospitality businesses have opened their doors. That is awesome in the environment that we have been through. That's just quite incredible. And final couple of comments to make around digital and creative, that's just essential. That's, as Anna said, that's the future. That is where we have a real comparative advantage. But why do those digital and creative businesses want to be here? And that is around lifestyle. That's around the ethos that we have of communities working together. I still hark back to a beautiful, beautiful event that Raygun put on about a year or so ago and we had over 100 different digital tech businesses there, more than 200 people there. And it wasn't about, hey, aren't we great? But it was about, aren't we all great? And how can we help each other? And that's the awesomeness, I think, that we have in Wellington, not just in the digital tech sector, but across so many parts of our community, that communities work together, support each other, and that's what makes Wellington a great place to live and work. And so all of those things with the lifestyle things, the community things, really, really important. And it is an ecosystem. You know, if we lose the hospitality, that vibe, if it doesn't feel safe, if we don't sort those things out, then people go, maybe I don't want to have my business here, maybe I don't want to come in. So all of these things need to work together. If they can't afford to live here, that's important too. So all of those things, really, really important. So I hope that this is a holistic approach and that we can activate this and continue to work with our business community, with Wellington NZ and with our residential community too, to keep building on what is a fantastic city to live, work and play and invest in.
Kialda, thank you. I'm going to second this paper. And I just want to begin by acknowledging and thanking the staff for the epic journey they've been on for the last two years. Probably really a bit longer than two years, but so I want to acknowledge Erica who got this underway and then Karen, who's so capably picked it up and worked up with it and had to grapple with the amount of information that has been there and getting that down into a condensed form that is really easy to read and very interesting to read. So well done. And also to acknowledge Anna. It's fantastic to have you on the team and your experience and your relationships that you bring with you are really, really important for us. And I do want to just acknowledge that the strategy has done a really amazing job of, I guess, having the front-loading with the community, with the business community, but then also our commercial sector in responding to the feedback that we have had through the process. It's really exciting to see how you've responded to what we heard through the submission process as well. This is a really progressive plan and it's quite exciting to see creativity in our circular economy really driving how we're going to move forward as a city. I do have to say, in the plan, I really enjoyed reading the case studies and seeing how they connected with what we're trying to achieve. And I think it is so important that we continue to look for and share people's experiences and stories because it helps give people hope that they can maybe give a go to something that they might be dreaming of and they can see it's a city where you can actually step in and try it out. Really excited to see the focus on rangatahi and Maori in the strategy. And really, really excited to read the statement that said everyone needs to at least earn a living wage. I thought that was pretty exciting to see and think about the journey that Wellington City Council's been on with the living wage. So to acknowledge my colleagues who have worked on that in the past, but to see it come through an economic strategy is a pretty sweet moment. So, yeah, very exciting. And also, I guess, just to acknowledge, like the mayor said, you know, that there's so much around our economy that is impacted, you know, by things that people wouldn't necessarily draw directly, but obviously the housing one that came through so clearly in the submissions that we must really think about how we can connect that and make sure that we are doing everything possible to improve housing in the city. And I do just want to acknowledge the mayor mentioned Biz Dojo, but also that we had a similar organisation out in Johnsonville last tronium called Suburban and they did an amazing job of bringing people in the community out to, it started in Johnsonville Mall and then it moved to a venue not far from there and people could work, you know, collaboratively work and have a working space in the sort of central shopping area there. And it sort of was almost, I guess, a bit before its time and it really, I think, I hope that someone, maybe the same person or someone picks up on that and runs with it now because I think with what we've seen with Covid, something like that is actually, would be really welcome in our suburban community. So I encourage people to, you know, continue and engage with council and you can see in the strategy that there's the opportunity to do that. And with that, I will pass on now to councillor Young.
Thank you. So I have a few things to say. One is, I'm really delighted with the strategy and all the work. I'm not going to name the officers, we've done that, but thank them. But I am concerned that when it comes to being a business-friendly city, we are talking out of both sides of our mouths because at the same time, the same we want to be business-friendly, we are putting up the cost of business through things like the rates and the various other impacts on businesses, which make it very difficult for them. And, you know, I understand insurance is a big problem. I'm not sure that the council can actually do much about the insurance market, but you know my views on that. And I am concerned that one of the reasons that people don't submit is that they feel that they're not listened to. And this has come up at some of the residents' AGMs this year. I want to talk in particular about the hospice sector, which is such an important part of our city. And last night I went to one of those new restaurants, Liberty in Cuba Street, it was terrific. But of course, a lot have also closed, but we do need to do more to be really helpful to the hospice sector. I understand we have a regulatory role, but we also have to say, you know, we're here to help you rather than try to make their life difficult. I would like to give a big shout out to Mark Patymore, has been incredibly helpful when there have been glitches and I've gone to him about problems with consents, slow consents, and he has always leapt into action and sorted it, for which I'm very grateful. I'm not asking people to bend the rules, I'm just saying to them, please understand what it's like to run these businesses when they have deadlines and they also have very busy times of the day, so perhaps would be better if our inspectors didn't go to a restaurant at lunchtime to do their inspections because the kitchens are flat out. We need to understand the stresses that businesses are under. I also want to talk about our relationship with the universities. I think, you know, our relationship with Victoria needs to be improved and I think we have a chance for a reset now with it, now that we have John Allen as the Chancellor and there'll be a new Vice Chancellor coming in because I think that that hasn't been helpful. And what was the last thing? Oh, yeah, I'm really delighted that it is one of the best cities for retired people. I hope I don't have to test that on October the 9th this year. But apart from that, I'd just like to say thank you for the strategy and let's make sure we really are a business-friendly city so that we can have, we can afford some of the things we want to do, but we need to have a vibrant economy to do a lot of those things. So I have great pleasure in supporting this paper. Thank you.
Kialda, councillor Foon?
Kialda, and yes, I know we can't go through the thank yous, but maybe I just really think we should be celebrating when we pass this today. I think since coming on council that moving on from the OG Economic Development Strategy has been high on my list. So I also would like to thank councillor Calvert for her early enthusiasm in making sure that we get a new strategy in front of us, which we have today. In terms of getting feedback, I actually just want to thank officers for the work they did ahead of the strategy by engaging stakeholders early and really getting that feedback early and then taking our key stakeholders on the journey with us. And I suspect that's one of the reasons why we didn't get tons of submissions is because many people were involved at an early stage. I'd also like to say that, yes, I just want to acknowledge Mayor Foster, you brought up some really important points and also councillor Day, just that housing is one of the most important issues we have to deal with. Although this policy is not, or strategy is not about fixing that, but we need to understand that if people can't afford to live here and that organisations are desperate for good employees and that is an area where we really need to focus. I am very excited about the acknowledgement of the digital and creative opportunity. I think that really hums for Wellington. It just makes absolute sense and it's something that we can really hang our hat on and go for. And Mayor Foster, you also talked about the collaborativeness of our sectors and I think that if we can do anything to help enable that through the strategy, that is really important. And I must say that it was my experience in the fashion industry, which is normally deathly competitive worse than politics. Actually, as a sector, we were always really good at working together for the common benefit. So I think that's a wonderful difference that seems to just happen in Wellington that we could really use as an advantage. And that, yes, our businesses are an ecosystem and they do need to be supported in the same way. So just going on to the circular economy aspect, I am beside myself with joy. This is a real win for the city, but also a win for all of the innovation businesses I know that are in this space. And they're often purpose-led NGOs, not-for-profits, businesses coming through in the Maori economy. And this is just such an exciting, when something like this is championed in this, as a city, we will rise to the occasion and that's what's so awesome about it. And I love the way that it moves into our Destination Porneke Plan, so our tourism strategy, that this all works into, our vision is for Wellington to become a zero-carbon capital, famous for transformational experiences, whether you are here for a weekend or a lifetime. So it is amazing to see all of this stuff lining up. Just in terms of responsibilities, I just did ask the question, I'm keen to see who is taking responsibility for each of these outcomes that we're after. So that would be something I'm really going to look forward to hearing how we're doing that when this comes back to council pre-LTP. I really think it's important that procurement is a major, one of the biggest levers we've got when we're spending $300 million per annum to actually support some of these outcomes that we're after. So I'll look forward to seeing how the policies, how the outcomes manifest through our procurement strategy. And also, I must say, I'm looking forward to seeing, when the district plan comes back, I am now hoping that offices will add the circular economy into the strategic direction. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody and I will personally archive the OG with and replace it with the new one and just thank everybody who participated on putting this together. For a city, I think we can be really proud of it. Thank you. Kialda.
Kialda, that's the, oh, councillor Penner.
Thanks. I just wanted to make one comment, which is my old friend Jo Coghlan, she was, remember Mayor Foster? She was in charge of the economic strategy and it was all about four lanes to the planes and a big sort of, you know, event centre and, oh, a runway extension, 2011. And now, just, you know, a decade on, sometimes it's hard to kind of go, oh God, are we doing anything? Well, actually, we have, like, it's a massive step change, this particular document, in terms of its emphasis on the environment, making sure that mana fenua have their rightful place and so on. So it's just such great progress. I'm very proud to be supporting this today.
I was expecting you to go for longer. Is anyone else wanting to speak? Otherwise, we'll go to the mayor's write-up reply.
Well, I was just going to say, first of all, thank you colleagues for the, for all the very positive comments back. Few things to just flick through. Councillor Day, you mentioned the Johnsonville Suburban and that whole thing of collaborative working, that idea is still very much alive and there is work being done on that kind of idea. Of course, in a sense, Creative HQ does a little bit of that kind of thing, but more of that would be tremendous. So hopefully we will see that. Councillor Young, yes, we have said yesterday, as you know, that we will have another look at where costs should lie between different sectors. So that's a piece of work. We should do that in a coherent way rather than just, you know, picking numbers. And of course, as we went through yesterday's debate, that, you know, every part of the, whether it's residential, commercial, the overall balance between the two actually hasn't changed. It's just that we've offset the changes and valuations that have been. But I agree with you completely around the comments that you made around hospitality and working alongside, working alongside businesses. I think that's the whole thing. We've talked about this one-stop-shop idea for a long time. I don't think we've landed that yet by any stretch of the imagination. The conversations that we've had here about the way in which the system works to let people know where their concerns are and when they raise them and how they're progressing, I think that needs to continue to improve. Certainly had that conversation with Wellington Water as well. But it's those people who are applying for consents, whether it's, you know, builder consents, legal licences, whatever, is having people to sit alongside them and to be their champions through the council process. I think that's really, really, really important. And I also hope that we can continue to improve the relationship with all of our tertiary. And I also hope that we can continue to improve the relationship with all of our tertiary institutions. Certainly, we've been up and talked with Victoria about that. We've got the idea in there, of course, of a joint committee arrangement. You know, I do meet with them regularly, but I think there is an opportunity to continue to significantly improve that relationship and to know that the gown is valued by the town and vice versa. I think that's very, very important. Councillor Foon, thank you for your really positive comments. And I do pick up, I'm going to say a particular thanks also to councillor Calvert for your work and enthusiasm for supporting the business community and for supporting the development of the strategy. And I just want to say my real appreciation of that. You mentioned councillor Foon, the importance of housing, which obviously I touched on. The strategy isn't about fixing that, no, it's not. And we were quite deliberate, we don't want to have in this strategy fixing every other thing that's relevant to this. Because otherwise, the strategy will be enormous and it would try and reinvent, you know, our district plan. It would try and reinvent our transport strategy, it would try and reinvent, we didn't want to do that. But we want to recognise that those things are important components of a healthy economy. Is that it? And... Thank you for all those comments. And can I just, councillor Penner, I'm going to defend former councillor Coghlan here. Look, that was a, that was a proposal, a strategy for the time. As I said, some of those things have happened, others haven't, probably more of them haven't happened than have. But, but one thing that she did say, and I do remember this, was that the aspiration to create 10,000 jobs, I think it was in three years. And we did. Now, whether we did, whether the city did, but the number of jobs that was created in the city actually exceeded the number which the aspiration was. So for whatever those reasons were, they weren't necessarily driven by those big investments, but they were driven by a whole lot of other things that were going on in the city. And that's that, you know, some of the, a lot of that, of course, is private sector, which is great. Some was public sector, but that aspiration was achieved. And there were a lot of people who knocked for that aspiration, but the city achieved it collectively. So I did want to actually say to her, I know she's not here, but to say, hey, defender on that one. So look, thank you again, everybody, for the real positive comments here and for all the hard work that's gone into this. And also to recognise all the work that's been put in by all of the people who've made submissions, all the people who've attended, all the different forums that we've had. And looking forward to continuing to work together, city, business, government, education sector, everybody. It's part of an ecosystem and that's what's going to make us an even better city as we go forward.
Kilda. In Iraia kapu tētē te wotini, let's vote. Oh, kua mana, unanimous, awesome. Thank you, everybody. So now we're going to move on to item 2.3, new lease for existing leasee, Victoria Bowling Club. So I think we've got some people coming to join us at the table. No, my, Kim Fel. Kītukoritītukoriror, you can introduce.
Excellent, so councillors, look, we're asking council to approve the commencement of public consultation for a new ground lease for the Victoria Bowling Club. This is aligned with the lease's policy for community and recreation groups and also the Wellington Town Belt Act. Should consultation be approved today, then we'll report back to this committee on the outcome of that consultation. And a part of that report back to the committee, should there be no objections which arise from the public consultation, then officers will recommend a new lease to council for approval. And any new lease, of course, will be conditional on the club implementing seismic upgrades if required and implementing a more longer-term sustainable maintenance programme. So Sanjay and Leece are here at the moment and they're able to answer any technical questions you might have, so.
Thank you, looks like we've got a car, three maybe, so start with councillor Young.
So my question is about the cottage. So I totally get the point that the club can no longer have someone from the club living in there. But I'm also aware that we have a huge housing shortage. So can we use the cottage for, say, a council employee vaguely related to parks and reserves? Or it just seems a pity to have an empty cottage and if we don't use it, what happens to it?
Kilda, councillor Young, thank you for your question. So the cottage is on Victoria Bowling Club's leased area and the cottage also belongs to the club. So it'll be up to the club, what happens to the cottage once the tenants vacate at the end of 2025? But we'll be working closely with the club throughout the term of the new lease to find a suitable solution there.
So is it a cottage that could be moved? I mean, is it in reasonably good condition?
I haven't actually been in the cottage myself because people live there. I think that is possibly a decision for the, for the club to make in terms of the future for that building.
Okay, thank you. And just one other question, it's just really around the fact that, I know I've got, it's not, it's not an emergency hub for Mount Victoria. So one of the officers did clarify, it does have a role in our civil defence, doesn't it, that club building?
Yeah, that's correct. So it's not one of the Remo Community Activated Emergency Hubs, but it is what we're calling an Emergency Assistance Centre. And that's a range of community venues that our community services team have identified that could be stood up in the event of a major emergency, depending on whether or not it was suitable. And so Victoria Bowling Club is one of those places.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Foon.
Kilda, yes, and following on from councillor Young. I guess my understanding is that on the Town Belt Act, that buildings, the current policy is that buildings need to be demolished if they're no longer in use or being used, is that? So I guess my question is, what is the process so that we, we don't see the demolition of a building for the sake of it? If the bowling club is put into that position where they have to make that decision?
So there's a process at the, at the end of the Wellington Town Belt Management Plan that sets out the process for introducing new assets on Wellington Town Belt land. And that's a process that we can support the club to understand at the end of the tenancy. And I think we can certainly support them in terms of suggestions and connecting them into our colleagues with kind of reserve planning expertise that have more knowledge about the management plan requirements in terms of the future for that building.
Okay. One more question on the TAB kiosk. I note it was to be demolished, to be, to stop, to be removed on Monday, I think. Can you verify that that has happened?
Yes, the club confirmed to me yesterday that the TAB have collected the machine and it's no longer in the cockroons.
That's quite creative, isn't it? My goodness. There we are, just wanting a few community gardens, but, you know, TAB kiosk is easier to get set up.
Councillor Penner.
Thank you for this. Can I afford all the maintenance and seismic work, do you think? Because it's, I mean, look, they're doing well, right for a bowling club, but it's still a relatively small number of people.
Thanks for your question. So we know that the club has existing kind of cash reserves that they're already being allocating to look after the condition of the building and also to, to conduct the earthquake strengthening works. I think they definitely have an opportunity to let other community groups use the space and get additional revenue in that way. We know that they've just agreed to a trial partnership with Trails Wellington. And hopefully that is a springboard for, for more use of the building and perhaps more revenue streams for the club. We have also supported the club with Sportsville funding in terms of technical reports so they can have a better understanding of exactly what their maintenance requirements are. So any funds spent by the club are spent efficiently and that's probably something that Sanjay could speak a bit more about.
Yeah, so we have highlighted to the club that we understand that the costs are going to be significant when they come back. So our first point of call is, once they get the technical reports and they understand the costs to come back to council to have those discussions. Again, given it's a side of sort of significance or bowling in the area and within CBD. We spoke about the emergencies site. Yeah, we would look to support them in some way, whether or not it's around gathering other groups to go in there or whether or not it's through the Sportsville money that we, fund that we have to help assist them with the strengthening of, of the building. So we have highlighted that for the future and given the means up there to come back to council once we know how much the costs are and then we can discuss further.
What a positive attitude towards someone who's got earthquake issues, I love it. Just the, and also I've seen Mark there, I think maybe he has a heritage classification on at some point, that classic 1960s look. The other question was about partnerships which you mentioned. I know a couple of years ago, even the school found them quite expensive to hire. So you think this is realistic that they will be, you know, that they will be a proper community place and that they've got rates that people can afford?
I think that's something that we've highlighted to them, the importance of utilisation with other community groups of the building. And that's something that we can continue to work with them on throughout the term of a new lease.
Have you talked to the hub at Mount Victoria about that? Because Trish does a whole lot of work, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, we know about Mount Vic Hub and they work with our other leases too, thank you.
You've got another question, councillor Young?
I'm just really wondering whether we've made any progress in trying to get a water supply off there for the families, children, et cetera, who use the playground thereby. I know there was some talk about getting lavatories, but that's more complex. But has anything, have we made any progress with that or is it really outside the terms of the lease renewal?
Thank you. I think that might be kind of covered in the scope of the Pari Street Playground redevelopment. We had feedback requesting like a water fountain there and I understand that's been assessed by officers and was able to be included, but I'm not sure, I'm afraid. And I think that might be outside the scope of this lease.
Okay, thank you.
Kilda or Mayor Foster?
Two questions, first one, I'm just following on from councillor Young's question about the house. Are there any circumstances, I'm just having a quick flick of what the management plan says about houses, so haven't got through that. But is, are there any circumstances where a house might be usable? Or is the management plan just can't do it, end of story? I mean, obviously it was set up originally as a sort of parky type house, but yeah. And I know we do have some, particularly the Bot Gardens, which we are keeping. But it's not directly counted, yes.
The tenancy at Victoria Bowling Club, our legal advice is that it's not consistent with the Wellington Town Belt Act as a residential use of the land, which is not for recreation, right? The main purpose of the Wellington Town Belt Act. So I think in terms of the building itself, again, that's something we can talk to the club about, what the future of it is that aligns with Wellington Town Belt uses, like recreation.
So clearly it's got to align, it's just whether there is, I mean, obviously a lot of these houses were built originally as for people who were actually looking after the area in terms of parks. So whether that's allowable or if it is, that's one thing, if it's not, then okay, but that's worth exploring. Okay, and the second, second area of exploration is just, you know, if you take out the TAB and the house, which obviously they're getting revenue from. You've looked at the viability of the club and what it's looking like, so what do you know about that?
Thanks, yes, we have. So the TAB machine had a relatively small kind of revenue stream for the club. But the residential tenancy income, that's why we have set the termination date to be the end of 2025 to allow the club to transition away from that revenue stream.
So there is, there are just issues, you are keeping a look at that and that will be part of the whole thing around the lease arrangements. And that goes also to any of those uses, other uses of the, of the building that can be achieved, which help them build the revenue stream too. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's all of the questions. So thank you very much for your answering those questions. And we'll now move on to debating the paper. So I'm going to invite councillor Young to move the motion.
But I have real pleasure in moving this paper. It's been quite a long, torturous saga, I think it's been going on for about five years with the renewal of the lease. It's a very motivated group of people who are in the club and they do have some fantastic club evenings for people after work. So they, it is a very active club. I'm really glad we sorted this out, I think it's been a bit of a nightmare for the officers, so I thank them for their patience. And I have pleasure in moving the paper.
Kilda, thank you, and councillor Penner's going to second.
Nothing to say except it's a good idea, thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak or are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Kua mana, that's carried, thank you very much, great work. All right, so now we're going to move on to item 2.5, which is the Built Heritage Incentive Fund. Oh, hang on, what did I just, did I skip? Oh, look, I'm too, too fast. Sorry, guys, that must have made your heart go. Item, item 2.4, access licence over Wellington Town Belt to Ministry of Education. And so I'm going to invite him to introduce the paper. And then we also have, we've got here John and Kate, is it?
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, John and Kate, Kilda.
So look, the Ministry of Education's carrying out a refurbishment sort of work on two existing classroom blocks at Wellington East Gills College. And as you're aware, the college is situated on Mount Victoria, above the tunnel and backs onto the Wellington Town Belt at the top of Ella Street. And to be able to undertake the refurbishment, access for the delivery of building material and the removal of demolition items are needed to the site. And so therefore, the Ministry of Education's requested approval to use an existing sealed driveway on the Town Belt for the delivery and removal of those materials to and from the site. And there's no alternative route for delivery, that's been considered. And therefore, that's why there is a request for an access licence. As you're aware, the public consultation is required under the Wellington Town Belt Act and the Wellington Town Belt Management Plan. So we're available here to, our team to answer any questions. We ask that the delegation's been made to the chief executive to carry out the steps to effect the licence. So yeah, thank you.
And so we've got a part from councillor Penner.
Sorry, thanks, so your report did say that you were doing a bit of consultation, you were going to report back verbally, are you able to do that first?
Yeah, so the Ministry of Education has sent a letter to Friends of the Town Belt, Mount Victoria Residents Association and to a letter dropped to the residents at the top of the street. And I checked in yesterday afternoon to see if there'd been any feedback and there hadn't been any. So there will still be another lot of consultation opportunity.
You know, it's all good. And then a couple of years ago, I did attend a meeting at East to, when the same kind of issue turned up. Look, I mean, probably we have to say yes, right? Like, they've got some work to do, but I just, because there were some concerns around traffic safety. And that school was a nightmare, like when the buses are coming in and there's cars everywhere because it's such a tiny site. So I just want to make sure that the students are safe and any of the, you know, members of the public using that part. What does the traffic management plan say, I guess is the question.
Yeah, so the school entrance isn't on Ella Street, it's on the next street over. So they do, so this will be coming, so the trucks will be going up Ella Street. And then they've, so there's, then there's a locked gate. And so the gate will only be unlocked as trucks are passing through it. And there'll be spotters, there's mirrors, you know, the curved mirrors. And yeah, it's pretty controlled. Yeah, so we feel comfortable that the safety of people who are on the Town Belt, but will be kept safe.
And there really is no alternative is there in this case to access the site?
It's, yeah, unless you're wanting a helicopter, which is going to be millions and millions and millions of dollars.
Thank you, councillor Young.
I'm just wondering whether we put any time limit on it or is it open-ended?
Yeah, so we said what's like if something goes wrong, you know, what length of time will you need? So we don't have to have you running over, but having it contained. And two years is was the time that was, Ministry of Education said, you know, with a contingency of something.
Okay, thank you.
That time wise.
I might just have a quick question to follow on from that, but I guess given COVID, like there is a possibility that they may extend, and that's a possibility, they can come back and ask for more time if they need, is that correct?
Yeah, and we need to be sort of reasonable if those sorts of circumstances come up.
Cool, thank you. Are there any other partoi? Nope. Thank you very much, fantastic. So, who would like to move this? Councillor, yep, councillor Penet can move it and councillor Young can second.
Okay, so the questions have been answered to my satisfaction, I think we need to do it, so just obviously listen to any feedback but good that we've come to the solution.
Cool. Do you like to second it councillor Young? We've just kind of nominated you to do that, you're happy to? Does anyone else want to speak to this or can we vote? Okay, let's vote. Now we will move on to item 2.5. If I got that right, the Built Heritage Incentive Fund, so 2021-22 round. And so no Maiki Tihura, we've got Shaun Ordane and Mark Lindsay who are going to come and answer any questions and help us navigate our way through this. So I'll hand over to you just to do a quick intro and then we'll move into some questions.
Okay.
Kiora Koto, it's my pleasure to introduce the paper apportioning grants to the BIF Fund. This is the final round of the Built Heritage Incentive Fund in its current form and from the next rounds it will transition to the Heritage Resilience and Regeneration Fund, the HERIF. Forgive me. Before you, the officer recommendations for the apportionment of the fund and if you have any questions, Mark will be happy to answer them.
Kiora, we've got a question from councillor Penet.
Thank you. So obviously always happy to see these grants being allocated. The Karori Road building has raised some questions. So I just wanted to get some more information from you about the importance of painting for conservation purposes and why it's different from anyone else painting. Is it a special kind of paint? And then the other question I had, Mr Lindsay, which I text you, is just so we look councillor Young has raised some questions about whether we've funded the Lilburn residents enough and whether we can reallocate it, just given there's been some flexibility this time between the two buckets. Kiora.
Kiora. Mora Nekoto, thank you for the opportunity to address your questions. There are three buildings which are subject to applications for painting, Circatheta façade, Haney Street Building with steel frame windows and the 1850s house on, in Karori. The first fact about painting is that the, for these buildings is that these buildings are all listed on the district plan because they embody particular special qualities individually as recognised heritage buildings and they attract the attention and the protection of the district plan through the RMA, which characterises historic heritage as a matter of national importance, one of only four matters of national importance in the RMA. So these buildings are significant for that reason and they demand particular attention to their preservation and upkeep. They're not like ordinary buildings, they have special needs because of those heritage qualities, not just that they're old but they're built in particular ways. So the Karori building, it's an 1850s building, it's a pitsooned timber building, it's one of only two that I'm aware of in Wellington, it's an 1850s building, it's probably the second oldest residential building in Wellington. We've discovered one in Thordam which seems to be older, which is also pitsooned. That timber requires specialised conservation architect guidance and advice for how that timber can be preserved in perpetuity to stop it rotting, it is vulnerable, it's old, it's susceptible. So that recommendation comes on the basis of a conservation architect's examination of the building and recommendations. Equally, the Haney Street Building, interestingly, that's a very high upkeep building. We are aware that the owners in their financial declaration for the application spend about $22,000 a year on the exterior upkeep of that building. So this is a small proportion of those needs. These are steel frame windows, they are rear and they have higher upkeep and maintenance cost attached to the particular type of paint treatment that is required to maintain them. And the Circatheta façade is rundown and degraded, its painting will occur as part of a wider maintenance plan for the preservation of that façade. And all three buildings will have repairs done as preparation for that painting guided by best practice heritage standards. Preventative conservation is a core element of heritage best practice, it's in the Wellington City Council Heritage Policy as one of the baseline functions that we have to undertake to ensure these buildings are well looked after and it's consistent with the BIF funding criteria.
Sorry, can I just ask a follow up question? You don't need to convince me, I agree with you, but I'm just trying to find a little way through. So it is possible to transfer that money to the Lilburn?
You have liberty to make that decision, yes.
Okay, right, thank you.
Thank you, we do have some other questions. Mayor Foster?
So just, because I was going to ask questions about the painting bit as well, it's one of the two questions I was going to ask. So just to follow that one up then, if a heritage building just merely wanted repainting and there was nothing significant or different about that repainting, is that, that could be the case sometimes too?
Yes, it is.
So then you would say no, I presume?
No, it's still fundamental upkeep of the building, so we would consider it on its merits against the criteria and against competing funding priorities. We have funded 14 painting projects since 2013 through the BIF. Most of them have been specialised treatments.
Okay, so I guess what I was fishing for was more, if the painting job on heritage building is essentially the same as if it were not a heritage building, would you then be going, yes, we'd do it or actually no, it's a low priority?
We would still look at that as a preventative conservation measure as well equally.
Even though if you were the owner of a non heritage building, it's no difference, it's just you've all got to do the same thing, you'd still do that?
It's maintenance and upkeep of a building, it's just that the heritage buildings are listed on the district plan and have a special.
Okay, right, but what you're saying in this particular situation, particularly the Karori one and the Haney Street one, they are, there's something different about those that actually it's a more expensive proposition because of the nature of the buildings.
Correct.
Okay, cool. And just the other question I've got, which is alluded to and it was really good actually to see the numbers that you had in the, in the paper of, you know, where we're at with those, with the heritage buildings. You said we've had eight buildings added to the list, actually we could see all the ones that have come off, you know, get a complete list of that, but you said we've had eight buildings which have been added to the EQP list since, well, since November.
Yes.
Why did they get added to the list?
This process is led by a resilience team who are working in the market to identify earthquake prone buildings across the city and this is just part of their operational examination of buildings. So it's a process of understanding what the building market is and what the status of those buildings are. So there's been a lot of non heritage buildings added at the same time. I think conspicuously the hollow core buildings that were revealed last week is an example of that.
This is an ongoing crisis because obviously what we wanted to is be getting the numbers down over time, but sometimes what you're saying, so are we going to see more of these sort of like, oh, a building we thought was fine is now no longer fine?
I think that's likely. I think what we would note though is that we're actually making really steady progress in removing buildings over 10 years. There are four funding recommendations in this paper for final projects which will take those buildings off the list. That will take us up to about 100 earthquake prone buildings which have come off the list since 2014 and almost literally half of those have been supported by the Built Heritage Incentive Fund and there's a reasonable cause to think that those buildings would not have come off the list without that funding support.
So those four in the, under 21, are they in the 30 or the 21? You've got, you've got a list there of 30 undertaking detailed seismic design, 21 completing strengthening works, are those four part of one of those?
Yes.
Right, okay, that's cool. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The 316 Karori Road, it's a category two listed building. How often have we given conservation type funding to category two listed buildings?
That's Heritage New Zealand designation.
Yeah, but I don't know, exact number but sort of in the, you know, very often?
It's, I haven't got that number at my fingertips. It's not a criteria in the BIF. Our criteria is these builders have to be listed on the district plan. It's just an additional factor about the building that it's recognised by Heritage New Zealand Pohearing Tonga.
And can I just ask a question about the, two things. What's the penalty on owners for failure to conserve heritage buildings?
The zero penalty and we do get that, a lot of building owners won't take basic maintenance costs and that's demolition by neglect.
And the second question is, obviously with the district plan coming up, just remind me, how do you get a building off the heritage list on our district plan? Is it simply by resolution of this council?
It's.
The delegation to put on is with you and is it off, yeah, can you just explain that?
The process of recommending a building for removal for the list from an officer's point of view will be that the building no longer, for whatever reason, no longer meets the criteria for listing and there is a wide set of criteria for heritage buildings. So for whatever reason and some of them are neglected and rundown, some of them have been changed fundamentally, that's a decision which is ultimately made by council's decisions on the district plan.
So in theory, we could resolve to remove all heritage buildings from the district plan, there's no legislative impingement to us do it? Well, no, that's my question, is there, is it simply a resolution of this council? I'm not saying, is it, well, hang on, I'm just asking the officers, what's the question, what's the legal process that we need to go through?
If we, so theoretically, yes, it is at the council's discretion as to whether it is listed. There are however results of exercising that discretion as there are with almost any district planning requirement.
Well, I guess what I want to know is, is there supervision by legislation of that decision apart from judicial review of it, which is always available? Is there other legislative restrictions on our ability to simply resolve to remove particular heritage buildings or all heritage buildings?
No, there's not. The RMA of course does have the judicial review provisions, that you're aware of, but there's no others. There are different provisions for archaeological sites, it's a different issue, that's provided for by the New Zealand, Heritage New Zealand Pohearing Tonga Act.
But it's with us, yeah, cool.
But there is no other.
That's excellent, thank you.
Councillor Young?
So just thinking about the $12,000 earmark for painting this house, how much of that is for the professional advice and how much of it is for pots of paint?
As I understand it, that's the cost of painting.
But you said that the reason we help them is because of the cost of getting specialist advice in how to paint a pitsooned building, so have they already followed that cost?
Sorry, not, we don't fund them because of the cost of that specialist advice but because of the implications that specialist advice for the uptake of the building is what we fund. This building has two applications and one of them is to, the other, the second application is to undertake a comprehensive conservation plan for the building and so that is obviously a cost. The advice we've got up to this point has been provided separate from this application.
Yeah, so I've got no problem with the other request. So the other thing is, when you are working out which buildings to support with the fund, do you make any distinction between buildings which are open to the public and buildings that are behind a hedge and private houses?
No, we don't because that's not a distinction in the district plan in terms of the listing. If the building is listed, then it meets the criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Penet?
Sorry to be doing this but it's good to get the advice, I'm just wondering if we could switch the money around a little bit, like the life church maybe get a bit less, the painting a little bit less and give it to the Lilburn? Like are we able to theoretically do that?
There's absolutely no impediment to you doing that, no.
Yes.
Right.
Chair, I was just going to ask, can we, awesome, thank you.
So we're just going to take a quick break to figure out how to do that and what will be appropriate. So how about we, maybe if we come back at midday, gives us about eight minutes to figure that out and then hopefully we can be all done by half past, everything else killed it.[1492.73] All right, so I'm just going to talk you through it so that we can make sure we've taken and put for the right places. So number three, which is 22 Ascot Street, the Lilburn residence, is now going to have the eligible amount of funding, given which is $9,373.75. That is coming from number 14, so if you want to scroll down to number 14. And so when we take off that amount that we added, we get $7,626.25. That's what, that's what will be given to number 14, which is 316 Corory Road. Then we go down to number 10, which we are giving an extra 10 to, so that brings it up to 40. That's Suka. And then number 12, we've taken 10 off, so 21 Haney Street is getting 10. Is that what everybody understands and is comfortable with, just confirming?
I'm very comfortable with that.
Great, and that fits with what officers were expecting us to come at, okay. Right, so were there any other questions just before we go into debating? I don't think there will be. Okay, thank you. So I'd now like to ask councillor Penet to introduce or to move the paper. And maybe councillor Young might like to second it.
Young, yes. Goodness me, in concert, again. Look, Kia ora, chair, thank you very much to the Grants Committee. We've now had a, hopefully a productive conversation. Look, it's always a great pleasure to see buildings coming up for earthquake work. Because, you know, as we heard, 100 buildings, sorry, 100 buildings left, but we've got a number of them off in the last six or seven years. So that is a great success and will make our city safer. I appreciate there are sometimes concerns around the conservation work, but I think Mr Lindsay gave us a very compelling answer as to why you do need to paint very old buildings in a particular way. And so that's why I'm happy to give them some money. The Lilburn, one of our most significant composers, I think that of course is very much a fantastic initiative. And also a pleasure to be able to give Suka some more money after yesterday's debate. So we've still got some discussion around that. But you know, Suka is a great institution. Councillor Fitzsimons, a lovely building in Island Bay, Yorohi, a great pleasure. And look, I'll just, again, will say, while this is a fund store for European heritage, we've got some work to do to think about how we're more equitable. And I would of course look forward to rectifying the terrible situation where archaeological sites aren't always protected to their level they do need to be. Kia ora.
Kia ora, councillor Young, over to you.
So I'm going to make a few, just a few comments. So first of all, thank you for everyone's sort of interest in this. I feel really strongly about the Lilburn Cottage. And it's possibly one of the most publicly accessible, well, certainly on the, of the list, because they have regular tours three times a year or so, I think. And it's used for the composer in residence for the School of, New Zealand School of Music. So it fits very much into our desire to be or retain our status as the cultural capital of New Zealand. Those of you who are not familiar with Lilburn's music may have been to the Rita Angus exhibition at Tapa, which closed recently. And Lilburn's music was used there, heavily influenced by Sibelius, et cetera, et cetera. I won't bore you, because actually it's going about the limit of my Sibelius knowledge. But I think this is a really important thing. It's part of the kind of triangle of houses in Thordun. You've got the Randall Cottage with the writers in residence. You've got the Rita Angus Cottage and you've got the Lilburn Cottage. All totally different cottages, all retained, maintained and run by volunteers. And so I think it's fantastic we can do something to support them. And I, look, I'm perfectly happy that we are giving money to the Pitsoon Timber House. I totally get it. But Mark, thank you for your help and Shaun, and everyone else's interest and support. So I have pleasure in seconding this paper.
councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, look, just briefly, I want to thank councillors. We did refer this up from the Grants Committee because we were concerned that it wouldn't get a decision that was going to be useful to the work that had gone into it. So I just want to thank councillors Penet and Young for the pragmatic approach to investigating these issues. I mean, I'm not a big fan of this fund. I don't feel good about funding some homeowners to do house painting in the middle of a housing crisis. It does feel a bit tone deaf to me. But look, we've got the fund, the money's there, and I'm happy to support it in this instance. And I'm also very good friends with an architectural historian, Elizabeth Cox. And she does give me a lot of berating and information about heritage. So I'm troubled and on a journey.
Would anyone else like to speak? No? Okay, so would you like to?
Thank you, thank you councillor Fitzsimons, it's always good to learn. And look, I take the point about tone deaf. But I guess heritage is kind of, all heritage is kind of like a little tree. And you've got to give it time and nurturing to look after it and keep it going for what may be hundreds of years. So, and of course, we must continue to put council funding into supporting more people into homes as well. More, a lot more than this BIF. Kia ora.
Kia ora, let's vote.
Unanimous, fantastic. Thank you so much for coming in, answering our questions and helping us through that. Thank you for your mahi on it. Kia ora. All right, so we're on to our last paper now. And this is item 3.1, which is the report of the Kawai Fakasepu Grant Subcommittee Meeting of the 24th of May 2022. And just to draw your attention that there was, you can see and read just that there's been a bit of a change there. So councillor Fitzsimons will introduce and move, and we'll go from there.
Look, just very briefly, want to acknowledge the work of these organisations. We've got iconic arts and cultural institutions in Wellington like Bats Theatre, Suka, the Creative Capital Arts Trust, the Catherine Mansfield Birthplace Society, the Newtown Festival, the Royal New Zealand Ballet and the Wellington Regional Orchestra, as well as the multi-year contract funding for the Newtown Community and Cultural Centre, Strathmore Park, Citizens Advice, Community Law and Kai Cycle. And going through those names quickly is not in any way meant to diminish the work that they do. They're very important institutions in Wellington and they do a lot of work. And I think it's a very sensible investment of public funding to value the work that they do and the contribution they make to Wellington.
Kia ora, councillor Phone, would you like to second it? Good. Can't imagine, I should just check if there's any questions of the mover, I guess, because it's a committee. But I imagine that there's not, so over to you councillor Phone.
Yeah, Kia ora, I must say the Grants paper looked a little bit daunting. And I do want to acknowledge the chair for the most efficient way it was run and we were over and done, quick, smart, whilst delivering such an amazing group of Wellington organisations, some support that I am so proud of, the work that they do and that this council can support them. So yeah, it's a real pleasure to be on the committee and there's never quite enough to go around. So I think that would be one thing. I'd like to acknowledge that all of the community centres and many did request that we review that in the next LTP. So if I get the chance to sit around the table again, I'm just letting officers know I'll be on that one. Thank you. But yeah, so just acknowledging the work that they do and it is sometimes feels a little undernourished financially. But the way they contribute to their communities, to our communities, is really critical. And we could be enabling them to do that a bit more next time round. So happy to support and second.
Yeah, I'll just follow on, say I just, I really do support those sentiments. Having been on the Grants Committee both last term and this term, we really do need to increase the amount of money we're putting into the poll, particularly for the community centres that they can't keep running on the sort of money that they are. But actually also the review of our facilities is really important to understand a little bit more of what those needs are and how we can alleviate some of the concerns in the community around, you know, actually providing for our communities. So I'm happy to support this and also want to acknowledge the chair who very ably led us through. It was like, I don't know, a meeting on steroids. We got through so much in such a short period of time. But yeah, as councillor Phone said, it worked and it was very, you know, we really respected the, all of the submissions that we heard, which were very, you know, very humbling actually to hear what people are doing. So thank you very much. And does anyone else want to speak? No? Do you need a write of reply?
I really don't accept that you kind of blew my cover with councillor Penet because I said we had a bigger agenda and that's why we couldn't do the Building Heritage Incentive. Which we did, but we dealt with it efficiently.
Okay, let's vote. Sorry about that. Councillor Phone, if you could vote, I know, maybe it didn't sense it. Yeah. Ah, kua mana, so that's carried, unanimous. So kua mūtū itine hui, itu mūtaka kia mūtanga. And I'd just really like to thank everyone who stuck with us today. Thank you very much. And yeah, we got through that at not too bad times, so have a good afternoon.